So first on our agenda, financial update from Jason Salem from Snyder Downs. See our performance of last year and here today.
Welcome. Well, thanks, guys. Another Wednesday at Franklin Park, another positive day in the markets. So always good to come here when the market is finishing up. Although I have to say, I was up in Cleveland this morning, visiting my younger brother. My niece was born this morning. And when I left the hospital, it was like it was markets were down and I was like, come on. New baby in the family, bring some greens, maybe so we brought some positive markets, which is a good thing. And I think, you know, overall, you know, 2024 was a very strong year for both capital markets and for the general employees and the police plan. I think it would have, it would have been an even stronger year had December not gone the way that it did. And I think, you know, returns come in a lot of different ways. And I think the, the story of 2024 is, you know, the returns happened in the first nine months of the year. And in 2023, the returns for the majority of asset classes happened in the last 45 days. Over 100% of the returns in small cap, mid cap, international and fixed income in 2023 came in the last 45 days. And then, you know, you had, if I'd have, if I'd have told you that inflation was still going to be in the high threes or low fours, you know, the Fed had not begun cutting interest rates, you know, would you rather have that, you know, that economic backdrop? Or would you rather have a turnover in administration that would cause, you know, a lot of enthusiasm? You'd have 100 basis points of interest rate cuts. And, and you would have, you know, renewed optimism among, among a lot of small businesses. You'd say, well, I'd take, I'd take 2024. And that led to, you know, a negative quarter, you know? So it's, it's one of those things where I think staying invested in markets and having a plan has been, has been very, very good. You know, it's been very, very good for both, you know, both plans. And I think that was like the big takeaway for me was that the composition of returns and how they come about are, are certainly something that, you know, markets are always going to be a little bit unpredictable. You know, President Trump and Vice President Vance get elected the best November on record. And then we gave it all back in December. It was kind of very much shades for me of, of 2018. Some of you guys in this room might remember Nancy Skeens, who was the CEO of Snyder Downs. And I remember calling her going into Christmas Eve mass in 2018. I was like, I'm like, this is, this is scary. The markets are down four and a half percent. Well, in 2019, markets were up, you know, you know, a lot of markets were up kind of 15, 20, 25%. And what we saw, what we've seen to start this year has been what happened in December has given markets some time. A lot of them take some time to pause and then we were able to really get moving, moving forward. And we've had a really strong start to the year. The police plan is up around $200,000 in the first month of the year. The general employees plan is up around $95,000 to start the year. So both plans up around two and a half percent to, to start, to start 2025. So very good start to the year. And I think, you know, there were, there were a few changes that we made to the portfolio. And if you could go to slide, I guess slide number six. And so our, of our investment themes, we, I want you to focus on number two, which is this idea of small and mid cap stocks. And one of the reasons that we like domestic oriented stocks is for, for a couple of reasons. The first is valuations are, are better. And then they have been for quite some time. And what we've seen start to start the year is the magnificent seven haven't necessarily been so magnificent. You know, Google was down, you know, eight percent, you know, today. And it's, it's negative for the year. Nvidia is down 25% from its all time highs, down around 10% for the year. And that's just kind of, you know, the, you know, the downside to these great expectations is that essentially, you know, good or very good is, is the enemy of great. And you're starting to see investors look for other, other avenues to, to source returns. And one of the reasons that we really like small and mid cap stocks was this, this new incoming administration, this idea of, of they wanted to make American businesses more competitive again. And, and kind of this idea of becoming more pro-business, you know, reducing the amount of taxes, you know, at the corporate level, being more open to M and A. You know, the, the prior administrations FTC was a little bit more skeptical of M and A transactions. And then you've, you've already started to see some of that, some of that start to come back. And so what we did upon the election of President Trump and Vice President Vance, we went and slashed our emerging market exposure by 50% and moved it into small and mid cap stocks, thinking that China was likely going to come under pressure from the US. And we felt like there was a, a, an animal spirits of business environment that was going to be very conducive to, you know, to small and mid cap stocks. You go to the next, the next slide. I think this is, this is a slide that, you know, if you, if you look at, if you look at this slide and you look at the kind of the, the small business optimism, and I think a lot of people, when you, when you talk about, when you watch CNBC or you watch Bloomberg, you only hear about Google, Microsoft and Nvidia. They do not employ a lot of people. Certainly they don't employ a lot of people relative to their market capitalization. So while they make, they make the stock market move, from an economic growth perspective, small and medium sized businesses are the true engine of the American economy and they always have been. And, you know, the, the chart on the left is an optimism index that these small, these small and medium sized businesses, they, they respond to this survey. And, and, you know, they kind of have to commit to responding to it. And, and you can see that the crushing blow that kind of inflation had on small and medium sized businesses, that was not felt in large cap markets. You know, you, when you're, when your, your cost of inputs, your cost of labor, all of that is going up. You're not really spending as much. You're not as enthusiastic about adding that next worker, spending that next dollar on property, plant and equipment. So you see that optimism go up and it's the highest it's been since 2018. The chart on the right is the share of, of small businesses that are expecting better business conditions. And that's the highest it's been in almost a quarter of a century. And this, this, this has manifested itself in small caps and mid caps getting off to the best start that they've had in over a decade. And in really leading the market when some of these large cap stocks that we've talked about over the last, you know, kind of, you know, certainly the last five, six, seven years, they, they're kind of taking a breather. And whether it's financials, whether it's small business, you know, some small industrial companies, small energy companies. This is a theme that we think certainly is going to be driven in a large part because this is what the, the current administration has campaigned on. They're going to, they're going to do what they can to try and really move, move the needle as it relates to small and medium sized businesses. They still have a lot of work to do, but the optimism's there and you're starting to see the markets start to catch on to. The, the administration might rattle the cages on the top end. Tariffs tend to affect large multinational companies that generate the revenue, not just from the US, but also from overseas. Small cap companies tend, small and medium sized companies tend to be more insulated because they're selling into all of us in this room. If you go to the next slide, please. Kind of in conjunction with small and medium sized businesses, we, one of the themes that we think they're moving, that's moving in the market is this idea of moving away from the first order winners of artificial intelligence and starting to think about the second order winners. And this is just something that, that I put together to kind of show the, the holistic view of how, you know, of, of, of how you would power AI or how you power this next generation. And it's, it's going to require an all of the above energy solution. It's not just going to be renewable, renewable energy. It's going to be traditional sources like natural gas that we're really blessed to have a lot of here in Western Pennsylvania. It's going to be recommissioned to nuclear sites. I mean, I, you kind of had to double, it was kind of like the Luca trade with, with, with Anthony Davis. If you're an NBA fan, kind of have to double check. When, when Microsoft was trying to recommission Three Mile Island, you kind of do a double check and you're like, really? We're going to, we're, we're, that's where we're going to go to generate, you know, the enough power to, to, to get this artificial intelligence off the ground. And, and what, what this, what both administrations have done, and I, and I think the Biden administration started it with their, their infrastructure bill, was they, they knew that we would have to have, to establish AI dominance, we were really going to have to upgrade our grid. That our grid is very old. Go look at what's going to happen in Texas the next time it gets cold. You know, their energy grid is, is, is very old, it's very fragile. We not only need to upgrade that part of the, that part of the grid, we also need to get ready for what it's, what the amount of power generation that we're actually going to, to have. And the Allen Institute, which is Paul Allen, who was one of the co-founders of Microsoft, came and presented to a bunch of investment professionals here in Pittsburgh last week. And he kind of brought out a chip that Nvidia produces about, about this big, you know, kind of say about 12 inches. 12 inches long and maybe, you mean, two and a half inches, you know, tall. That chip requires the same amount of energy as four refrigerators. Four. And if you're going to do a chat GPT search, how many people have done the chat GPT search here? How many, how many people have done a Google search? Chat GPT requires 10 times the amount of energy that a Google search does. And you think about what we need to do. So we're really big on kind of second order winners of artificial intelligence. And so we own infrastructure assets in, in both plans. We have, within our small and medium sized stocks, we own a lot of the companies that, that make the bolts, that make the wires, that make, that help construct the, you know, the utilities, we own, we own utilities. These are the kind of investments that the second order winners that, yeah, Microsoft and Nvidia won the first round. We're trying to figure out whether Nvidia is worth 50 times earnings or not. What we do know is that to fulfill their promise, this, this, you know, this, you know, this chart, if you will, or this, this pictorial, this flowchart has to be true. And, and so we feel very good and comfortable about getting that theme into our portfolios. And I think from, from the standpoint of energy consumption, we're going to need every bit of it. It's going to have to come from the traditional sources like natural gas. It's going to have to come from what we can generate, wind, solar, hydroelectric. And then the recommissioning of, of nuclear, which I think for Pittsburgh is exciting because of our legacy Westinghouse business that's, that's still here and, and is owned by the Canadian company Brookfield. So we really feel like that is, that is a very big part of kind of the domestic story. And if we, if you go to the next, the next chart. So we've talked a lot about, you know, US market, small and mid cap stocks are out to a really good start, outperforming the large gap peers. There's still this question of evaluations and markets are working through how they, how they necessarily feel about some of these, some of these larger cap companies, are they growing as fast as they, they have to? Like Google said, we're going to invest $75 billion in AI and we have to invest that much or we're going to fall behind. And so the market looked at that and said, yeah, you're probably right. You probably do have to invest $75 billion, but that means you're going to be less profitable. And so now you're starting to see the market start to really wrestle with this question around valuations. You know, the chart on the left shows the US equity market against, you know, non-US equities. And it has, it has, it's been a painful experience if you've been a non-US investor. If you believed in diversification because of this dominance of, you know, seven stocks in the US large cap market. But now you get to your, you get to this place in time where international stocks are trading at a 54% discount to the US. And you have the, the weight of incredibly high, and I would argue impossible expectations versus incredibly low expectations. You have a, you hear domestically, we're in a wait and see mode on interest rate cuts. In the, in the international markets, they're cutting interest rates, so a little bit more accommodative policy. And we've seen international markets come through, they're up 6% to start the year and are off to, to a really good start. And if you, if you go one more chart. This is another way of looking at it that goes all the way back to 1950 and shows that, that this relationship between US and non-US moves around. And you can see right around 2014, you get above kind of the, what you consider to be normal and it's continued to go up. That's because of the innovation, that's because of the Microsoft, Nvidia's, Tesla's, Netflix, Facebooks of the world. I still can't get myself to call it Meta, someone that added facebook.com, you know, email, you know, I remember when that was a big thing back when we got it in college, so still call it Facebook, but that's the reason why. And if you go to the next slide, the reason that you hold non-US stocks is that there are periods of time, and you can't really see it with the shading here, but there are periods of time that US stocks go out of favor. You know, from 1965 to the, you know, to the, to the late seventies, international stocks outperformed. You know, in, in the eighties, everybody was worried that Japan was going to manufacture everything. You know, some people might remember that they bought, I think it was either Warner Brothers or Paramount. They bought, they bought the hotel that President Trump sent in Home Alone. What is that hotel, Waldorf in Central Park? Right in Central Park, Waldorf. They brought, they bought the Waldorf and they, and they bought every fine, fine artist's painting that you could possibly imagine. And then they went into a 35 year deflationary spiral and, you know, you can see the American economy, you know, as, you know, since been, you know, they did not in fact, you know, eat the world. These things are cyclical, sometimes they last longer than we would expect. It's good to see, I think it's healthy for US markets to take a little bit of a breather. We like our non-US exposure. We think it's a good hedge, it's the best hedge in a portfolio like, you know, the, the police plan and the general employees plan. Because if, if the US is going to take a breather, if it's going to go down, non-US, non-US stocks are, you know, they, they have the, you know, low expectations, not a lot of people own them relative to, to US stocks. So let's say it's a very good hedge and it's proven to be, proven to be a good start to the year. We'll see where, where we go. And we prefer kind of the developed versus the emerging because we do think that this, this tariff, the tariff, the tariffs between the US and China are going to be very real and they're going to be long lasting. And what, what I don't think many people appreciate is that under the first Trump administration, we had significant tariffs on China. The Biden administration kept all of them and add, actually added to them. So we have, we have been in a, in a tariff war disagreement, however you want to frame it, with China for the better part of eight years. And my expectation is that it's going to be the better part of 12. I'm going to say that the US economy is likely going to win that one. So, you know, we're, we're underweight emerging markets, but we do like kind of the developed world, think like Europe, Japan. You know, that, that, that tends to be things that we, that we like. So that's kind of the start to the year, the end of 2024, what we're thinking about. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Jason, you mentioned after the workshop, the exposure emerging markets with the minimize.
Yeah, we cut it in half, yes, that's correct.
So holding everything cut, but the moving forward.
Yeah, so, so what we did was in the general employees plan, it was roughly around a 5% weight. We took it down to two and a half percent. So called target, we took 3% out of emerging markets, we moved that into small and mid cap. For the police plan, we probably took closer to three and a half percentage points out of, out of the emerging markets. And we moved it into small and mid cap stocks. So far, so good on that, you know, we'll see. But we, if you think about that optimism, optimism chart and just the, the, the small and mid cap stocks are benefiting from the cut in interest rates. I mean, Microsoft has fixed rate debt. I, I, I heard someone talking about Walmart in here earlier. Walmart has, you know, fixed rate debt. They're not affected at all by interest rates. Small and medium sized businesses, public or private, you're paying, you're paying your debt on your balance sheet's floating rate. And you're either paying that back every 30, 60 or 90 days, you're making a payment. The, the amount of relief that, that reducing your, your interest rate costs by 100 basis points immediately drops to the bottom line. I think that's also a big reason why they're moving to start the year.
If rates don't, you know, go down. Well, say rates do go down, let's just say that we better have a thing with 3%. Close to 2%, 3% is okay, the acceptable norm. Would cause the, the small to basically skyrocket?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if you, if you see interest rates cut, small caps and mid caps, because that tends to, if that interest rate cuts coincides with the economic growth that this current administration believes they're going to be able to generate, small and mid cap stocks would do incredibly well. They're going to be the early beneficiaries of it and they're not going to feel, and that's one of the things that you saw when, when the tariffs were announced late on Friday, the market sold off on Friday. But what sold off were like the large multinationals and, and a lot of the tech stocks, because there was fear that China would open probes on Apple and Google. And they have, which was kind of expected. Small and mid cap stocks actually held up better and then were leaders on Monday and Tuesday and today, which is kind of what you would expect to see if you're starting this next leg up of, of economic growth. And if you get that, those interest rate cuts, you know, you get them for the right reasons. We would expect small and mid cap stocks to outperform the, the large cap peers.
At the beginning, you talked about the importance of the grid, keeping up with all the technology advancement. I would expect that getting the grid up to speed with all the advancements that's going on with AI and technology that, that's not going to happen real fast.
It's, it's not, it's not going to happen fast, but they're gonna, they're going to, your plans need to get put in place and there's, there needs to be capital expenditures, like cap expenses to come online. You're going to do orders, right? Get out in front of that. And that's the kind of economic generation that's really going to help power some of these small and, and mid cap stocks is that, you're right, it's going to take several years to, to get it, to get it updated and moving.
So without that happening, does that, that technology slow down?
Well, I think what the folks, you know, in the small Chinese startup deep sea, for those of you that, that have heard about it. They're talking about using chips more efficiently.
Right.
Regardless of whether you teach them to learn, to, to learn more efficiently, as we start to transfer more of these kind of we'll call like administrative tasks to AI bots, agents, whatever they're calling them, that's still going to put incremental pressure on the, on the grid, whether, whether it accelerates the way that the people at Silicon Valley think it's going to accelerate or, or if it, it accelerates at a more of a reasonable pace, you're still going to have a lot of those, those same pressures. And, you know, we're still, the humans, we still, we're still, you know, still need to heat our homes and we still need to, you know, power. And God forbid, we didn't have Disney Plus in my house and that would be, that would be awful. We still need to do all those things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason. James, things coming out again. I'm hearing about here in the markets up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's being close to 60, 90 today.
Hope it's a 6,500, that'd be great.
Okay. You know, it's due to the agenda, so all business overall update. On, which was the first news press.
I shared what I learned in Jefferson Hill with all the people on consults. I, obviously they tried this like small and it didn't. It didn't, it was narrowly defeated in the, in the general election in 2024. But they did it for, they were looking to do some of the same things that Franklin Park is being faced. You know, new revenue sources that won't, will avoid raising taxes on the funded citizens, especially with seniors that have been in the house their house for a long time. They, they, that apparently is a pretty big part of what they have. I'm not sure we have same percentage of seniors, but we probably do have some. You know, when somebody is selling a house they had for a long time. And I'm not saying that just because I'm in that pocket, but it happened to move because of, literally because of, of local property tax.
Yeah, I, I think it might be a good idea at some point, pull the data, see how we compare. Uh, that's the only, we do have a high, we may not have such a high percentage because a lot of the inflows over the last 10 years have been not retirees. Uh, so yeah, that is a good way to air that. Have diversified that basis, so the last collection was. I did try to call her, President, President Jefferson Mills, of course I'm very able to that. So although if they haven't part of me and kind of hear her out, but I did read through her message. Looks like the messaging of, the messaging, the pain of what caused it to not pass. And then they're only family, so it wasn't like a loss, a loss, it was 300. And she wasn't a top voter there for the commission. So they have seven or eight people lined up. They received votes, but just they did not have a jury to pass it. I'm not sure if they'll do it again, but I wanted to kind of untangle it. Okay. Yeah, that's it.
Live report, I was just looking at the 13 Tuesdays or so, just to map that out. You're not going to make the May primary flag, the date to consider, I guess.
November.
And yeah, for November, which would be similar to what we did last year.
We'll, we'll come back and see, we have, we see if they're going to go purchase again.
You know, I think that we've talked in general that most, I think most of the people currently on council are pretty happy with free council. There's six council people and a mayor and the structure we have. And we're not looking necessarily to blow all this up, but we are looking for sources of, different sources of revenue. I mean, the one that jumps out is the, the transfer tax. I mean, most people may or may not notice that because it's in that pile of paper when you buy and sell your house. And we, I think we did about, about a half a million dollars per year currently because current deed transfer. So that's a pretty big, that's like 5% of our budget comes, well, not quite, but something close to 5% of our budget comes from the deed transfer tax and buying and selling your homes. So I mean, if you doubled that or did some adjustment to it, that could be significant.
Yeah, that's actually, just looking back, we probably want to pull the data on this. We might have avoided the mileage increase that just occurred at that transfer. And it's actually been a higher percentage. Yeah, I, I, I wanted to hear like if they were interested in changing their structure. I guess not, we were not, kind of sounds like just in our discussion here. But at a minimum, two things to tell, I mean, one, yes, just doing that will give you the ability to do that. The other is, every other municipality surrounding us really is on the charter. And that sounds like the same thing for Jefferson City, that was one of the things that, you know, even they are the only one that is not on the charter in their area.
What was it, you think about the last gen?
She's a term, was it people warriors?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, I think people, I think just understanding it, the straightforwardness of it. So it's possible that, I tried to look through, think there was social media to see if there's anything about this. There wasn't really much. Not much, but I can kind of ask her, give some examples, but part of it could be, it was spun in a negative manner. As in, they're changing, they want to do X, Y and Z, which may not be true. So my interpretation of was messaging was not very clear or maybe they've pushed back. There are those people that we do, I, I think, I think there are like 10,000 or 9,000 like.
Actually, I think the population has seen that, I think it's 17,000 or 18,000.
Okay. I just want to buy the voting. Like there are, but if not.
I went to the website and I think they gave the population of 17,000 or 18,000.
What, and that, that.
Pretty sure, Duquesne was much smaller, they were like five or six. They did the search slash here for both of them. But I'd be surprised if I think it sees us in politics.
It says 2020, it was about 12 and a half thousand, so relatively.
Okay. I was, I'm confused, I, I looked at several of them on there, like, so I thought they were a little lot of.
The other, yeah, I saw the vote, I don't know, it failed 3,600 or 3,400 or something.
They're within 10%.
To max your mind, we heard that right now we're going to have a million for the transfer tax. If we do the home little charter, we have the ability to double the transfer tax, right?
I, I mean, you add your, your freedoms and limitations of local tax labeling act, what those fix act numbers are or otherwise. Tough to head, there is ability to change earned income tax. Sometimes that has to be paired with the deduction of the mileage rate. Sometimes that has to be paired with the induction of millage rate. Just a trade off or a shift. Um, but then there's some other items that are not as constrained.
And it doesn't, it doesn't have to happen as a part of an acting rule, right? No, yeah, cause once you're.
Yeah, yeah, you don't even.
And then down the road, it does provide flexibility for the municipalities. So yeah, so maybe that needs to be clear in messaging, that was an issue with their campaign.
I think we've talked informally with one another and at some of the work sessions, that also agree that. New sources of revenue that don't disenfranchise anybody in the borough. Our residents is probably why stormwater, for instance. Deed transfer tax is just another one. Uh, we don't really have a mercantile, we can't do a mercantile tax. Yeah, you can't, well, I don't think we can do that even under home rule.
Yeah, I mean, that's a local tax enabling provision that says if you didn't have one by nineteen eighty eight. So I don't know. How a home rule charter, I don't really, I've never heard of somebody doing a.
I guess what, Uday, what pops into my mind about this is, is there. I I realize that county attorney counsel can't really dive what the commission comes up with. We, I mean, we can make, cause it makes suggestions like any citizen, but we. We can't, we can't direct them, hey, you gotta go this direction. They're gonna come back, they're gonna look at. If they do their job as they're supposed to and come back with a recommendation. Um, I think most of us did. I won't say agree, but we we casually felt that we could not blow everything up, but to find a way to take it. Our current format from under the municipal planning code, transition that into a. Home rule and then just tweak it a little bit, we thought. Really exploding the thing or looking to go to this, become a township rather than a borough and, I mean, we don't wanna make. draconian changes here, we're just looking for, um, a way to open up the window and and. You know, help the resident about.
Yeah, that keeps it simple, so we definitely don't have to go around to Borkensberg, that's gone, their mayor is now full time. I'm not sure.
I'm good, just like it is.
So yeah, they made a number of changes there that are quite the lead, so yeah, you're right. Part of this could be to guide and guide it in a way that is. Simplistic, but provides flexibility.
So streamline it and the easiest way to do it is put council members on the commission.
Should feel tall, you'd be perfect. Yep, Jefferson Hills president, she, she was on, she's a couple of years. Very passionate about it.
The other part that comes with that, if we can frame it so that it's gonna be, the our vision is a simplicity change. And we reached, correct me if I'm wrong, but we looked at some consultants that would guide us through this and it got to be quite expensive.
Yeah, we don't really.
We don't need to spend six years on this.
We also really don't need a consultant because the the whole idea is. That as we, as you said, and if you guide the commission, you're headed towards a home rule charter. Where you're basically chartering the government and I know there's forms for the home rule charter that that are pretty standard. That will adopt what we have now as our local government process. But it will give you the option of having the realty transfer tax and the stormwater thing and stuff that won't. Like you said, impact on the folks that are here. In a disparate way, so. We have the ability to both create it and, you know, and guide the commission to to come back.
I guess the worst case is the commission would go really in a bad direction. And we couldn't control it. I guess we'd have to do a K F P to get it voted on. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't want to cover that.
I I believe in you then, I.
And you have the vision now, cause you know exactly.
The President Jefferson Hill responded to you, not me, so.
Well, and speaking of relation, one of the thought, um, A long coming up, getting in of April, I think, I mean, they. Won't send out their agenda, it's the day before, I don't think they'll have a home rule charter section, but. Maybe just looking at that list, since we talked about the McCann list is. Marshall, whoever is a home rule charter, people kind of look at that and, you know, you're ready to do this.
And they'll be there, uh, at that, well, that's very interesting, they'll school.
I think the vast majority of those that have around us have. So it's gonna be hard to find anybody that remembers.
They don't all have Cathy, so.
Max, did I understand you correctly that we've missed the deadline to do it for the primary? We'll do it November?
I mean, unless we did a special meeting.
No, I think we have a lot of public messaging to do and education. So I think.
I think I agree with Laura on that, I think, because with a hundred and sixty seven signatures on the ballot. And everything else that's going on this spring with the, with the primaries and with the judges and everybody else that's running this year, it's gonna be a.
So there'll be a lot on the ballot.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a crazy ballot anyway, we're trying to get that message. Oh, I think if we're, if we're serious about doing it in the fall, we have a probably started process really soon. At least the messaging process and.
Well, the last messaging we did was for the millet rate, so I think maybe we just think about doing something like that again.
I want something going for my charter, I think it fills in some details.
Yeah, and then we can circulate it and do it. I think that probably works.
It may not be a bad idea to talk to. Yeah, the President Jefferson Hills, um, I mean.
You wrote that, remember that?
Yeah, looks like she.
Change her last, I apologize for that. She, she seemed very nice.
Wait, you were saying her message messaging was not.
In in the email, I mean, the downfall of the messaging, uh, along the confusion.
Yeah, we definitely need to get ahead of it, cause it is confusing. And I'm sure if anyone heard us saying, oh, well, they're gonna change the former government, former government. Immediately, I would.
I don't know what that means, but I don't like it.
Would it be a bad issue of having full meetings that we set up for people to come in and talk and ask questions?
I think, I think so, even even before, I mean, it could be. Once we have an epic queue or whatever, uh, just in other form as to like, hey.
The more, the more open we are, the more transparent we are, the better.
I can probably have something ready for you guys to review by.
Yeah, I I kind of like our form, I mean, with with. Six, six people and a mayor, that's seven people, um, when it costs us three thousand per year per person, so. Our whole, our whole elected budget is twenty one thousand dollars for the year. So I mean, you're not gonna get much more efficient than that with people sending all meetings and doing. Everything that we do, huh? And I, and I would suggest that, you know, I'm not suggesting, I like to keep it. Cause I want people doing this that because they want and give back to the community. And not, I don't want anybody doing this for the money, you know, so I don't, I don't want.
Be the wrong reason.
It's definitely the wrong reason, right? It's a little bit more than the school board that pays nothing, which I did for ten years, but this. But still, you you're not gonna do this for the money either. And I think we need to be consistent, right? Come up with this. I like the words and districts we have, I think it works well. You're representing a reasonable number of people. Um, having the mayor do what he does, um, with his public safety, police and fire.
Yeah, definitely the structure did not change, we.
I think that we get that message to include that we like it, but here's what, here's what we want to add to it, to have the flexibility to add to it, that we can't. And then you did a great job on, on, on the, on the village one, so.
I think we have a question in there about will it change?
The government.
Current, right, so.
All right, well, let us work, I can let us work on it more. If you want to spend the draft over, I'd be glad to give you thoughts and input on it. Maybe we can get something. Start the magic.
By seven or nine, lowest number, five was, or was it seven? Sounds like seven, so.
You found one, that's.
It's right.
No, I I didn't do them on a couple emails, but I was trying to.
She was happy to like goodbye. All right, um, anything else on the role? Okay, not on to the next little general city escape, our list of project, hoping for please three.
Um, after the presentation, uh, three weeks ago, I reached out to Susan Rayburn to let her know. Of concerns we had with the FE portion of it regarding emergency communications. Um, she then came back and asked for a, uh, phone call with F T involved and with our emergency people. So we had a phone call with, uh, Luke representing counsel, Gary from Public Works, uh, Chief Chakas from the Fire Department. Uh, Aaron and Sam from the Police Department, myself and, uh, Susan and Travis. And, uh, discussed our concerns about the recommendation. The recommendation is where we. Have, uh, all of our emergency services on a dedicated U H F frequency, which isn't gonna work. As the county doesn't monitor that frequency here, or it doesn't serve our purpose. Their other, their other recommendation was keep our fingers crossed and hope that the county provides for us. And that doesn't always happen as we've seen, so we need a third option. So we, uh, explained our position with, uh, U C escape and F E. Um, and, uh, F P's going to come back with, uh, another recommendation.
Did it for another basis of what, uh, gave that first recommendation, but I couldn't remember.
They, they thought that we simply wanted a way for our. Well, we, we pointed them initially when they were doing review and, um, it was clear that. Fire and Public Works wanted to be able to communicate. We got a cam right now except by cell phone, which in a large part of the borough, cell phones don't work. So we're stuck with that issue. So they came back with, they thought we wanted a. A low cost recommendation, so that's why they came back with U H F. Um, and that now they understand that doesn't work, yes, so that, so. They're gonna come back with another recommendation for us that we can consider as part of this and with an estimated cost for their recognition. Cause they now understand that, uh, leasing fire need to be on a frequency that's monitored by the county, Public Works can't be on the frequency. But we have to have some way where fire and Public Works can.
Is this sort of phase two B or? Is that moving on to phase three? That's why we put them in.
Right, you have to decide if you wanna move on to phase three or not. I'm not sure waiting for that should be a holdout for you or not, I think that's, I think council accepted with city escape. Um, so you had to now decide if you wanna move. And they understand the.
Yeah, I think we thought that it was either gonna be the low cost, you would type option or. Throughout establishing our own, oh, our own center, that is that, which obviously is not.
He didn't realize that everything was absorbed by the county and it can't break out of it, right? Yeah. In, 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 in their defense, F T, when they were talking to the county, has to accept what the county tells you. The county told them, don't worry, we take care of everybody, it's all okay.
Think I'm okay moving forwards as long as it's very clear to them that. What we expect as far as, you know, you said you can't go with the U H F. I mean, as long as they understand all the constraints that you just expressed from that.
Which we made very clear, I don't think, absolutely. Uh, did they say what it was about this? The F P portion, yeah, um. I I told them that if we had it by tonight, that would be okay, that would be great actually, but. And I'm not sure that would hold us up in deciding whether we move to the next phase now. Cause you also have to address the issue again of cell covering in the borough and. And you have to make a decision or you're okay with what city state told you, we're just gonna stop there and do nothing more, or do you want city state to come back with?
Phase three is, is a recommendation.
Phase three is, uh, conceptual plan and, uh, a draft wireless master plan. So they'll actually be working with us to determine, um, where infrastructure could be located, what council prefers. Um, and then they will come back to us with their draft master plan based on that. There will be a lot of input on the way. And that's also where if we want to do a survey of our residents, which I think we should do. Um, and probably a mail survey, not a computer survey, because a lot of our residents don't have computers. Um, that should be part of this process.
How does everyone feel on moving forward phase threes, given how we're gonna be, like the updating? Um, how does everyone feel about moving forward phase three, uh, and we are gonna get the update to be. Part of urgency.
I was trying to find. The original document that laid out all three phases.
Five phases.
So five, well, yeah.
Their phase is called planning scenario development, includes city escape conceptual planning scenarios. Which again is them talking to us and I believe also holding public meeting and doing surveys. To help determine what we're interested in and where it might go. And then city escape and F E, based on that information, coming back with a draft of their overall master plan from. So that's where they are.
Yeah, that's about. Twenty thousand dollars.
Is the pricing broken out between a public survey and public meeting?
They said if we wanted, public meeting, public meeting would be part of that. Well, then actually, I'm sorry, the the next phase after that would be the public meeting and the survey. So this is just them working with us to figure out, they wanna look further at our zoning and understand where things can go, understand what. Council's desires are.
Okay.
And then come back with the draft plan and then the next phase after that would be public meeting and survey.
Okay, I agree that we need, we should do a survey. What exactly are we looking for though? And I know we're not in that phase right now, but are we looking for? If we put in some sort of infrastructure input on that or or?
I believe you're trying to understand if we have, if people have a problem with cell coverage and if they would like it improved.
Well, that's interesting though, isn't it? Because number three seems like putting the cart. From a logical standpoint, why do I want a, a plan or a suggestion? Then I'm gonna go to my, um, residents and say, which, what are your problems? What do you want to drill?
We're not trying to sell the plan, we want their input before we have a plan.
I think we need to go the other way.
If possible.
Find out what people are looking for, what their problems are, and then please make a recommendation as to what the solution is, not the other way around.
We do a survey. And then see what our results are before we decide on a public meeting, cause if a public meeting is an extra cost and we have enough data from the survey. Then we don't necessarily need to do the public meeting. If we're looking to just gather information, like I asked them those questions.
Yeah, it almost sounds like staging. You go for the survey, if the survey gives you enough data across the borough. You're good. If it doesn't, then you need to go to a public meeting and I would say you probably need. One or two zooms where people can attend.
If the public meeting is asking, is conducted by them, where we're asking for feedback from the public, if we just wanna interface with the public. And get feedback, then we don't really need to get city state, which is not necessarily a bad idea.
Right.
Um, but let's start with the survey.
Yeah, and actually.
Survey might have been, here's the plan, are you okay?
Yeah, I don't like that. So what happens if the survey comes back and like, we don't like this, we don't like this plan that you just. Paid for from twenty thousand dollars. Well, then we'll have to go back and revise, that sounds like.
Yeah, I don't wanna pay for a couple of plans if we can avoid it.
Let's, let's get all the input and then make a plan based on the input, right? And that's, yeah.
That's what.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't pay for a couple of plans. I mean, they don't charge us for a plan and then we say, hey, we wanna change, and then they charge us again to change it. It's a one price for a plan that we accept.
Meaning we don't get revisions or meaning?
We give revisions.
I think from a public standpoint, trotting out a plan somebody gave you, hold, without knowing what people had problems with or what. It's a waste of time and also it's bad P R. Because now you put this plan out that nobody likes, nobody wants, and there, there, there's an uproar to change it. Instead of just finding out what they want, making a plan to fit.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask them if that's okay and then we'll focus on the agenda again.
I mean, we have, we have multiple. Types of service we're worried about, the emergency, uh, Public Works, the emergency, uh, the county service. The cellular service, and I'm just wondering that as they look. At the borough, that they look at the weak spots for each of those. the weak spots for each of those individually, servicing individually. In other words, we may not, we may not have a cell problem in this area, but we have a dead spot for public works, for instance. Or are they looking at this more generically just? I mean, seem like, seem like, seem to me that we want to break those services out and say individually where are our problems?
Didn't they and then?
I believe that was in, in the presentation. I believe they showed us drawings broken out.
Yeah, I would, I didn't have time to pull it up here.
I don't think we have it.
Yeah.
I don't think we've gotten the, the PowerPoint from their presentation though.
Yeah, when they presented that FE did their presentation, which showed what they saw, which was emergency services. And then city escape did theirs, which was cell.
Okay. I think we're kind of saying the same, I'm saying similar to what Brian, we need, we need to figure out where, what, what the residents in, in the community thinks, but the residents in the community probably aren't going to have much input on public works or on the Fire Department or the Police Department or any of those things.
I agree in that those, those recommendations can be part of the final, uh, where we've gotten the input from the folks about.
Yeah, we, I don't think we would ask our residents, how do you want us to be able to? We don't want them to get.
But it's a bad idea.
But I'm just, I'm just wondering.
We don't use a can with a string, cause that's the cheapest.
Is there a possibility that one or two things might fix? I'm making this up. One or two things might fix the police communication, but have nothing to do with cellular or public works. So we may have to do, we may have to address fixing the, 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 the dead spots in that possibly individually rather than that, you know, just looking at where is there.
Yes, yeah, ultimately what they're going to give us is a overall master plan for the borough, then companies, the companies is everything we want.
Okay, yeah, there may not be, there may be something over here that addresses police only. There's nobody else, that cellular wouldn't be on. I'm making that up. There, there could be, there could be some places where we don't know the lack.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I, I think that's an important component. Obviously you're right, the residents are only going to give us probably internet. I mean, um, their, um, white, uh, cellular. Cellular and really it's, I know some of the cell companies now, I don't use it, are, are, are selling um, wife or internet right, you know, right from your phone to your house, bringing it right in through the air rather than through cable and cellular. And I don't know whether that's something that we can do in the central part or not. I still have, I saw the coax cable coming into my house for internet, so I don't know how the rest of the borough does well with that. But I do know one of my, one of my children has hit for a while, had T-Mobile or something, where you have to do anything to put the box in the loft and fly it out of the sky somewhere. So there are different ways to do that.
Yeah, we have city scape for an all encompassing master plan.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, all right, your business review, the agenda.
Why is that question number four on there? I don't understand the profit.
Yeah, the MPC. So the MPC says, uh, a plan needs to be recorded in ninety days of approval. Oftentimes when an approval given and there are certain things that need to be lined up or they need to get there, make sure they're ready to sign it and everything else gets to us, the time has passed, so we have reapprovals. Um, and we are exploring and this because our standard, uh, signature line sort of says, you know, here's the date of approval from the voting meeting or so. There is county language that has sort of built in and you've accepted or met all the conditions and therefore it's been accepted by the borough on like tonight's date. And so we could sign it without having to do a vote. And then they would have to record ninety days from tonight. But that's not part of our standard, uh, approval process. So we're looking at.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, maybe else to go? Yeah. Yep, room public hearings.
Hey, you have my written report. Talked about whole charter, uh, one sort of update since it was submitted on, uh, waste management. We have worked with Donna, put together, uh, an extension agreement, we circulated and signed. There was one change, I guess, you know, in terms of the, the existing contract and what waste management will pick up. Uh, that now they will take, um, I guess it's sort of one item of, you know, home renovation, construction debris, one vanity, one door, one building or else. So we've added that and, and the extension.
Our seat was up to, I think, two cubic meters or something like that. Now they're just saying one item.
You have to call in or just dump it of your stuff?
No, you.
The ones there.
You can just put it out.
I guess we still will get that. They can just put it, stop outside, just one item and let them know. Because that means this is my first time to hear that.
Yeah, you've, like I said, you've always been able to put, you know, so much with, it was called construction remodeling materials, but now we're just limited to one item.
Actually, here's part of the part, you will have a level of service you will not have anywhere else in this area.
I, I can put that bulk items. Once in a while.
Well.
Uh, well, I didn't, um, I didn't have anything in addition to the report I submitted, um, to the meeting. But to be happy to answer any questions, if there were any.
Were we moving accounts around to get higher interest rates and so then?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, one, just one real quick, but are we, are we getting close to seeing how we act, our actual finish of twenty twenty four was?
Yeah, yes, I, yes, I, um, I planned to do as part of my report for the meeting, like a kind of a restatement of the year end numbers, um. You know, I'm just off the top of my head, but there was, there's more, there was a lot more tax around when it came in, when I approved to twenty four. You know, seven, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. So I'll do that and, and, and some expand. Not the expenses, not, not as significant, but, um, but there were some of those as well. But yeah, I'll do, I'll, I'll see some a restatement of, uh, year end twenty four and then, and then also, but what activity we have for January.
I mean, hopefully we didn't have too much excess money covered in, but that'd be a good problem or, uh, more, 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 more as we didn't overrun in twenty twenty four and what overspent. I don't, I think the way it was looking, we were going to finish the, to the positive side of the year. So I know we, we cut it pretty tight for the twenty twenty five, so keep our fingers crossed that all works out. Thanks, Daniel.
Thanks.
Um, along with my report, um, just want to say that, uh, salt wise, we probably used about close to four thousand ton of salt in December and January, uh, with this, I mean, uh, January is crazy. I mean, the guys, a lot of overtime, uh, they were out. They, they, they go out. As soon as they get home, they call back on again and that's what happened. But you start getting all these small, small storms coming in, it just eats up the salt, eats up big time. So, uh, we've had three thousand ton on order. I've only got a thousand ton of it and we're fortunate, fortunate that February, that the last couple of weeks hasn't had any snowfall because, uh, I think not only us, but everybody around, we're going out of salt. There's quite a few, uh, communities were out, uh, just thought that they were on their last loads. You know, and it's, it's slow coming in. Uh, I, the orders I've had out, I've had out since, uh, the second week of January, they've only three, filled three orders. I get probably close to two thousand ton yet that they stole those and yet so. Uh, but other than that, you know, it's, you know, we just, I hope that, uh, hope that the rest of it's a little mild, a little mild side here. Cause other than that, we get it, we get hard, hit it hard again, we're going to be, we could possibly be out. You know, because, you know, we got, we probably got about twelve, fifteen hundred ton on hand right now. Um, that, uh, are calling for ice tonight, so it's hard to tell what's going to happen. So. Anyhow, that's one thing, Aaron, and, um, uh, I just want to talk about, um, uh, losing my thought here. Well, I was talking about the, the roads, yeah, the road separate walk and the others, it's, uh, uh, with the frigid temperature we have, everything's even up again. We've had that, that happened this month, probably I think four, three, four years ago.
Said.
Um, and it just, everything's coming up. I mean, it's, it's up everywhere. It's actually the last part of the last two weeks or seven went back down. So, um, it's kind of nice about it, you start getting into the warm weather, weather or settled down, a lot of it wanted to notice and, you know, the staff to get back out and do some practical repairs and stuff like that. So.
I know.
Um, but it's, you know, now, now as far as like settlers walk, we had, um, you know, residents calling in about that, saying that we had, um, the pavement on the schedule four years ago and it was stamps a lot. That happens each year because when we go out for a road tour, a lot of times it's always on the council every week. Kind of says, hey, this, this road's worse than this one here. Let's pave this one, you know, and that's what happens. So sometimes those, because we were even talking, or the email part of it, far as putting the, when you put the roads on, you know, and we put them on there, um, through the budget, if you put them on there, people see that and then they expect that a road to be done. Sometimes they get put off because of what the winter does to it and sometimes they get put off with what we're beyond that, you know. It's how, you know, it's how it goes and cheer the less, but, uh, I think it's some, somewhat probably not a good idea to put all the roads down every year that we're going to pay because I think a lot of people are trying to always do it, you know? And it just doesn't work out anyway, like I'm down there. You know, so, and hopefully the, um, roads will settle down and, you know, I know, because we don't have this, uh, this is probably a low volume on roads that we're going to do this year. So, you know, um, so hopefully the roads out that we want to next year, a lot of the work, a lot of extras on it too, so.
I think you still have a lot of the road, you know, the King Streets to do.
Well, we were planning on doing all the King Streets over in that area. And then we're looking at doing like Ashbury and Anshamport. Uh, but I mean, I, I can give you a list right now, uh, you know, we got, uh, Nipples, Fields of Nippleson, we got, uh, Spring, Spring Ridge, we got, uh, Settlers Walk, we got, there's a lot of plans out there, they're all coming apart. I mean, it's just some, it's a lot of roads. We've got a lot of roads we're going to need to do at some point.
But the goal wasn't to like go through our budget and present it by fixing roads this year. We specifically discussed this. So we're going to have to be conservative about what road repair we do.
Yeah, and as Gary said, this happened on the King Streets three years ago and we had a crack ceiling. We, we, we've had another three or four years.
Yeah, so we need to think carefully about how we're going to do that.
Well, well, the thing too is when you're looking at, when you get in on the roads, like all the King Streets over here, uh, when you look at that plan, you try to, you gotta try to get in there on a lot of these plans to get in, finish all the roads in the plan because you don't want to go back in there all year and run over your good roads with all the heavy trucks. You gotta try to make a plan to where you get in, work your way out from the back out to the front, done with the plan and then, you know, that, that plan won't be touched for a couple of years, you know? Uh, which didn't really happen over here because we did, um, Sandhurst and part of, uh, uh, King James too, um, or, uh, King Charles, yeah, not King James, King Charles, we did part of that. But I was planning on coming in on King William's side, where we'd stay off of those roads. Um, you know, uh, you, you just kind of look at things like that. It's a pretty good sized plan over here. So, um, it takes up a lot, you know, it takes up a lot of room over here. So.
But, um. Do, do you know, did anybody go back to, to, to be, to need to respond?
To the, the resident. Um.
Seven months.
Yeah, I, I've got back and, you know, told them that, you know, we, you know, that it wasn't on plans, it wasn't on plans to do this year. Um, you know, it's just, you know, they didn't hear anything else on, um.
Our, our.
I said, we're looking, looking to possibly, you know, hopefully get on to it next year if we can, you know, um. It's just that, you know, and, and then basically I told him too, is that we're not sure every year on exactly, you know, depends on which roads come apart versus other ones, you know, because some, sometimes we have other ones come apart and we have, have to get in and do. I mean, Angmar Heights is a perfect example. With the water for you, we never planned on paving that and then we had to put a lot of money into that. And the shaft, so. Just, I don't know from year to year.
I'm guessing Settlers Walk, that's probably all original, right?
That's original, yeah. It's going up, it's telling them pretty good.
Oh, let's see.
Yeah, I'd say, um, the roads, the list of roads, uh, we, we probably should keep it on there. Um, I know it does encourage residents to see that and try to call in and get their list fixed, but we can add a disclaimer, you know?
Yeah.
Sort of disclaimer, like this is all based on conditions, um, subject change, et cetera. Max can be helped to support. Call that, despite that lawyer.
When we put it up usually that actually we put the budget.
Is it in the budget?
Yeah.
Hello, oh, uh, yeah, I think like.
That's P P P.
Central page of the play. Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Um, this month, uh, the sun hearing board has four hearings, um, one of the hearings left over from last month because of the, they didn't have a quorum. Uh, so they'll be busy. Um, and then the planning commission, um, will be re-reviewing, uh, what their holdings for Cardinal Riz. Um, there's going to be changes there and, uh, we quite, we can mark from the, at the last meeting, um. And then, then the other thing I have is Manny's been chasing a lot of snowflakes over the last couple of weeks and, uh, we've, um, since the last two years haven't been real snow production years, which was nice. Um, we've kind of resurrected the ordinance and found that we can not, which completely slipped my mind, that we can actually find, uh, through our notices violations. So we're going to begin doing that because um, just chasing people down to no avail isn't working. And I think that if we put an expression twice our muscles a little bit, I think we make it a little bit of, you know, a little bit more reaction. Which in turn will give you people reaction that they're down to. But, you know, there won't be thousand dollar fines, there'll be one, five, fifteen hundred, so. I will.
How do you guys? How are you finding the violations? Are you going out or do you have enough people report?
We're actually, we have enough complaints that we're doing when they, when they report on it, um, you know, we got a complaint. And handle it.
They're calling you, not the police.
Right.
Unless the police wants to write a man. And we are, but I, I didn't think I could, I know they wanted us to have a fun today. But, yeah, so I mean, this has been a problem for years and years. Um, I, I hope this, this will, you know, circumvent the, the issues and, uh, let's just be prepared. If we get some snowfall, you're going to get some phone calls, but.
I kind of brought this up earlier Tim, but it's really weird wording, the planning commission, and it's maybe Max can kind of advise us. Um, I guess they nominated somebody for vice chair.
He wasn't here and and the other gentleman said, well, geez, I'd like to done that. So they switched gears.
Yeah, that makes, it's just weird that it says, did you read it? A unanimous vote and disfavor was passed receiving with, uh, motion failed. There'll be a better way.
I think it's just, I should just say the motion failed.
There's actually, yeah, nomination was declined or revoked or something.
So Stephen wasn't there, um. Just.
On census.
Didn't work out that way. I, I, I think it was hard for the.
Sure.
Uh, I don't know.
I would say either brand.
It's kind of like, there was no, there was no unanimous here in that show.
But, but to your point, it's a public, um.
Yeah.
We'd like to have it like unscrambled somehow, so it doesn't say that if there's still some opportunity to revise it.
There is, I mean, they're not looking till the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, just reading it, it sounds like.
It needs to be reworded, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all. We can tell our solicitor perfect. That would be spectacular.
Sorry.
Nothing good?
If I was looking at notices of violation, then I think, oh, there's some down for two thousand and eighteen still showing up on the, what are we doing with those? Why are they there? What's going to happen?
They're, they're just old, they're just old permits that we haven't had a chance to chase down because other things getting in the way. I mean, you know, when we have and I don't have a whole, whole crew like he has over there, I think it's, it takes.
Okay, but five years maybe.
I understand that.
Okay.
But, well, and, and we're, we're trying to get there. It's just.
And some of them look like they're things, like they built something and they, but they didn't have a permit. So they're just enjoying themselves for five.
Well, it's, it's not, it's, I don't think there's many out there with, without permits. In fact, I don't know of any. It's just that they haven't got, they haven't been approved. So. Well, it's, it's not, it's, I don't think there's many out there with, without permits. In fact, I don't know of any. It's just that they haven't got, they haven't been approved, so. I don't want to just kind of clear them off the books because they have code violations that. If something happens, it could be.
Yeah, well, there's like a swimming pool or two there that they built it and didn't have a final inspection and they're, they're in operation. That's probably that, right?
Yeah, that, and that's mainly because of the electrical inspection.
Yeah, and having had one of those, that's, that's a pretty serious thing.
I mean, we chase most of the stuff down that we can without having to get in into the house or something like that, um. But, you know, if electrical inspection's on top of that, then, you know, there's, we can't do that, so.
I use code sis.
Yes.
Right. So is there sort of preventing this from filling codes this out to the, the house instead of you?
Well, when, when codes is, you know, they have to get, gain access to the house. It really has to be able to be there to. You know, them to win. A lot of stuff we can see without actually having to get into the house, so.
But what's the teeth to the thing if they're, they're, they can just continuously. Not have a final inspection, what, what's the? What is the alternative for the borough in a certain that?
You will be an all traffic citation.
Mm-hmm.
That's my idea before the magistrate.
Uh-huh.
And now they get their intention. Well, maybe it's better than just letting it sit for four or five years and, anyway, okay.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim.
Jim, real quick, I noticed a number of permits in that over the, I liked your twenty year report you threw in there, but I mean, we. I know we had two slow years with COVID, but it really hadn't picked up as far.
Because there's no lots.
Mm-hmm.
And and the one plan that has lots, actually the two plans that have lots just aren't selling tonight, and. It it befuddles me because all the other communities are selling like pancakes, so I have to assume it's fraud. It's not because everybody wants to be a Franklin Park.
I know, I know the one on Nicholas Road that has the lots, what's the other one?
Um, it's the Bliss. So it's only ten lots, there's four of them off, I think, two of them.
All right, it's occupied.
Two of them have occupancy, two are spec.
And the cost of building just isn't attracting people that.
Well, the cost of building the product that they're.
Offering.
Offering it. I I think, I think it's.
It's a lot.
It will do a number of buyers.
Yep.
Yeah, listening to him.
I mean, the houses that they're putting in over Nicholas Road are four fifty, they should be four fifty, I think they're sixty. That, that, that and the. I don't know, it it's not happening in any other community. You know, there's some, there, there's some.
That's like in the farms, like that.
Yeah. I mean, Ryan built that settler walk plan and that, that was the best community they ever had in, in Western Pennsylvania and it was. One fifty lots in less than five years. So it's not Franklin Park, it's, it's the frauder. And unfortunately, Rhonda has. The developer over a barrel because. It was their plan and. And I think they've written their agreement so they can't be thrown out of it for another developers.
All right.
Um, at least if I was Rhonda, that's what I would have written it. Um, so, um, and and nothing's happened over there. I'm getting. I think I've had two applications this year, um, in the last, you know, the last quarter for them, I may have had.
Three.
They still have a quarter phase, right?
Yeah, I should, I should, I should get about seven permits a month. And and that's typical for, for a, a large plan with like Rhonda's or Heartland.
So do we have like a dog in the bike and someone can sit down and say, you guys aren't moving this stuff and the reason being was blah blah blah, and, well, do we care?
Well, I don't know if we care. I mean, it would be nice if we were like the, we were correcting them on, but you know, I mean. We're, we're spreading it out because it's not like we have any, have any lots in the way neither, so.
Yeah.
You know, once they're, once they're gone, there's.
Side walk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, they're. Take this out both places, but until then.
That, that's, I mean, that's going to be an issue. That is, yeah, there's going to be an issue. The, the, the guy that bought Neoh's property new, going at the house there. Um, he doesn't want to put that, that sidewalk in, he doesn't want it in there and. Said, well, we'll put that, it's talking today about that, so.
Trying to put in some of the plants.
Yeah, and there's an easement there and it's bonded, so if the developer doesn't put it in, we're going to put it in.
Yeah.
Um, he may be coming back, ask permission to move it closer to the road and. They may try to get, I guess, an H O P for the. To put it in the, in the public road right away, which I don't see a problem with that. Because it is kind of, you know, it's in the middle of his front yard, but.
No, I'm applying now.
Yeah, it's really close to, really close to his house and they did that so they wouldn't have to get an H O P, but. You know, they'll have to deal with the state if they don't want to do that.
Oh, well, think about that, if we consider that, because remember on, um, what is that, France School Road? Where we put that title again, a lot of people said it's too close to the road because it is a high traffic road, just like Nicholson, so.
So walking in the sidewalk, you've got a car going, it really sucks.
Thing about that is we're going to move it closer to that.
It's better than walking in burn, you're in the gravel.
True. I mean, I don't, I don't see people walking along Nicholson frequently, but if you put a sidewalk there, presumably that will attract people to walk there.
There's plenty of people to walk on Nicholson and run and bike and do all that stuff.
Okay, well, let's think about the positioning that if we're willing to.
Yeah, maybe we're. Well, this one, which, which. The house that's.
Like a system house.
It's still there.
Yeah.
The property.
Yeah, it's. Also, I'm like, if you have. It's what?
Village.
Somebody, it's only good.
Is it next to the church?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I know that, but.
Yeah.
Do you keep like the earfield?
Well, that's another option.
Logical or this?
Yeah.
Well, the house that's selling, what's the, then I'm going to replant those trees. In both places. I know they're not going to, I'm jumping.
Yeah, I was going to ask, concerned about Taylor Ridge, that's the, the field, that other half of the bridge. Okay, all right, uh, Tim, any deals?
Uh, you have my report, um, newsletter, hoping to wrap up Friday, get it out on Monday, so we can have inbox, uh. First Monday of March, which I think is like the third off the top of my head. Um, that's pretty much it, right?
That's too quick for the home real charter stuff, then.
Um, well, you, because you won it in the election for, or the. For November, then the next one should be coming out, um. September, October.
That's really too.
Yeah, that's too fast.
No, that's no good.
Want to cut off, Zach? For, for this one?
For this one, for really Friday.
Right, what's today, Wednesday? Okay, maybe. Let me see if I can get this to you all for review for tomorrow. Um, for the newsletter.
On the when?
Friday.
How much do you think we'd have a?
A good bit, yeah, at least a full page.
Have to be like a four pages or.
I can, here in the end, let's go say.
I can do full page.
Well, we still have two for you. And that puts us at. Where we need to be.
Can make that. Two pages, five.
Well, that's, yeah, we just, we need to be at multiples of four. With your two, which we always count on, we are at twenty eight. So.
We need either two or four for them.
It, it really depends how many.
You tell, you tell me how many years is going to be enough for the rest.
Okay, all right, um.
Between the two of you, we need six pages there.
Okay. And then, do we have something in there about, what did you and I talk about, putting in the newsletter with Reach?
There will be something in there about, uh.
Oh, the.
A survey, yes.
Okay.
There won't be the survey itself in there, there's something about it.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Right, um. I guess from the, the golf side of things, obviously, there's not much going on there other than the. The golf outing, uh, will be coming up in, in Zai. Um, we always, you know, obviously push for as many golfers as we can, um, Cranberry's minimum is usually a hundred. Um, we use the average, you know, this past year we had eighty eight, that's most we've had in the last few years. He's willing to forego that minimum just because we're helping out another municipality, but. It'd be nice if we can get a good push this year and and people to really get that hundred to really show. New venue that this is something that's good for them and, and for us as well. Um, so that's it on the golf side of things, um, obviously the parks, the guys, January, the weather. Lot of snow removal, a lot of sidewalk, um. We are fine with the sidewalks all, we've got a couple more pallets in, so we've got plenty of that. Going forward and, and the supplier to restock with a bag, so. We're good there. Um, and then, uh, just others, quickly Acorn, there has been some work this week with a little bit of a weather break. Then a couple of little things for the water, some water pits for the water fountain waiting on Westview Water. Um, they've been have, I've been busy with water breaks, so they have been back to actually put their pit in. That should be happening soon. Uh, they've been up putting some handicap sidewalks out, little things they can do right now. And then the bridges should be coming in soon as well for them. Uh, be placed in, weather depending. So at least there's something happening, a lot's happening.
Yeah.
Early January, December with the cold weather and the wet, so. Still moving forward there.
Golf, huh, that was a, that was a good price, that just doesn't include the food in it, is that right?
Yes, yeah, but we're still going to be.
Way under.
Way, yeah, well, with the food, it'll be like one twenty seven total, something like that, where. You know, last year, I think we were with a champion, we were one forty three and we're charging a hundred and fifty, so we're making seven dollars a person, and this year Shannon's number was way above that. Um, and so, but I think River Hall would be a good, it should be a good outing, it should be.
Of course, it was private for a long time before being like.
Yeah. Nice course, they, you know, their, their food is not an in-house thing, they, they actually have a caterer for outing, so it's. There, there's some, some choices that go on, I can make for food and some breakfast and things and make it an enjoyable day. An unprofitable day, so it, it should be good. Thank you. So.
Actually, Jim, it's nice enough to give most of my update there, bring one park to their back. Only thing to add, um, to the bridges, we, we did target contracted today, they're still on pace. What they told us, um, the week of February twentieth, so that hasn't changed, um. The, that continued all the waterline, cleaning up stuff, as I thought, bridges, um. The marching towards finish with spring. And I think everything else is, is added in our report, not, not much else for this season.
Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of highlights, um, we did receive the major, major modification for Ramblewood. Um, and then also with the approval at the fifteenth, um. Council meeting, we are waiting on, uh, the COGS to complete the contracts for Montgomery Road. Um, so we'll conduct a kickoff meeting, um, shortly after that. And then I'll leave the rest up to your discretion on what we want to choose as.
Uh, you have my report, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, and then I have a topic for executive session as well.
An exciting traffic survey you gave us this month.
Yeah, eh, well, the weather definitely kind of hindered us, uh, uh, from doing a lot of traffic studies, so.
Permission accomplished, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, um, so automatic report for that. So, kind of. Need anyone to.
Um. I believe everyone.
Too bad. Reach one million, right?
No, don't. That works the like. Yeah.
I know where to find it.
I mean, any business. Which we have to love, that insurance company.
Yeah, when I thought about. Um, do you know that like an assumption, are you going to, if you like go straight through them, like to, to like the high, to get the future, and then you go like up like team?
Yes.
Um, is that like what?
Yeah, I'll take care of this and that.
Yeah, that is my family.
Okay.
Like something like last year that.
I mean, how they?
Yeah. And then like, I'll be saying, I'll turn left turning lanes, I think I passed like that, um. One.
Um, it's been six in the morning.
It's just, I wasn't sure. But no one's.
Is it part of the law, so it was all, yeah.
It's like sitting there for like fifteen minutes, yes, and then. And I just, I wasn't sure like what area.
I have no idea, I haven't communicated about that, yeah. I hear some.
Um, yeah, I had spoken to Luke briefly about, and I brought this up a few months ago, the daycare. There's, um, a gentleman who lives at his neighborhood, both on the Franklin Park, who are trying to buy the daycare, um, the actual contract with the owner. Contended on them getting. And so any updates to put in like a little belly slash, um. Back in your face.
Yeah.
It's like a work project for the kids.
Small hands.
Without the daycare contingent, so I think, I haven't seen.
Is this the yellow world?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
But that's always such an awesome place to handle, right?
Uh, so I, I was clear with him, there's some significant hurdles in terms of zoning. I think, like, I totally, I think he has some strong arguments. Um, logical arguments, not necessarily legal arguments, which as we know in front of the zoning hearing board, don't hold nearly as much weight. Um, but it's something I think we maybe should consider or at least think about as. Counsel because that basically is like. Or it soon will be, and, um, I think there've been several attempts to sell it. None have been successful, to my knowledge.
Everybody wants to run a daycare there.
You know, well, nobody wants to do anything with it.
Yeah.
It's not suitable for a daycare.
But it's bad for parking, it's really bad for parking. There's almost no parking available.
Big, big problem with having kids in a basement with only one.
That's a huge problem, man. And how they do it for so long. How they put that, how they do that for so long.
So I know there's some. Legal hurdles, perhaps insurmountable, um, but I think that's something we should consider. Just that it's coming through, um, just to think, but, because otherwise, what's happening about property?
Hmm.
You know, so. I guess that maybe would be a question for Tim, but it is R two, if I understand correctly. And there. I don't think they could do conditional use for that, I remember, I mean, for the people, so. I don't know what the options would be, what we're going to send.
Yeah, that's the thing, it, it is R two, and if there is anything there, there are some, not many. Uh, you know, non-residential uses that are allowed to, there. Anything, I mean, the daycare, even if it was conditional use, I think it became non-conforming, I don't think it's a daycare, it's like, it's something. I mean, you could consider and look. Just at the R two in general and the types of uses and maybe there's something, you know, community convenience store or something like that. What's the parking and certain, you know, coffee shop kind of a, a unit based thing that's not as intensive as what you see up at the M. Two or in three, but. Also, it could be potentially having other places in the R two and so control that by having. Specific requirements for the conditional use, um, that they would have to meet or seek variants for aggressive. One way to address around them and a rezoning of the one little area or an overlay or if you could go through a use variance. Legislative change, but that would impact or affect all of R two. Has, has he had any conversations with Tim, sat down?
Many, yeah. Um. I also think last conversation, you said, you have a Tim, you said, Tim said. Like I told you, it's going to be difficult to get to the zoning hearing board, your best bet is to have council change the ordinance, which at first blush, I don't love that idea. And as we talked about, I think it's a great idea to start changing ordinance and based on one person's needs. Um, if that's even legal, so, um.
It's really the only property right now, but.
Right, that it would really.
Yeah.
Effect, so, um, I just think it's something we should think about because in terms of that property.
Yeah.
It has been home racial, I think you said it was a.
Well, when we moved here in nineteen seventy six, there was actually a little grocery store in there.
Yeah, there you go.
Talking recently about that, because my grandfather back then.
Yeah, I mean, there was something even with, like I said, the, the daycare, I remember looking at it, when we were fighting with them over the play structures in the back and. Over the play structures in the back and fence weather and everything else. There's some history of approvals, um. That was part of it. But I mean, there's other types of uses like conversion use. I can see that a lot, but. Converting schools into residential, I don't know what to say, taking a formerly commercial building. And you have to do some limited activities there if you go through initial process or something like that, so. And there could be some limits that are put in place that would make it available to others if they meet those requirements. But wouldn't allow. Commercial establishment on every lot in R two.
Yeah.
Couple of, I mean, you can task planning commission to look and consider just more broad based, not that site specific, but. No, it's part of the consideration, the a review of the R two. Doing that anyway to see what new uses are out there. We have the used not provided for provision that we had, then center. But we're seeing everything, battery storage facilities. I think, yeah, we did medical marijuana. Might have, or there's some other ones that are popping up. Law centers.
This building. I imagine they want to knock this down or.
No, they're gonna keep existing. Well, the plan is to keep existing structure and then uh reconfigure the inside, remodel it. Um, fill in the pool. And they have already said, I think they're gonna start talking to neighbors if they haven't already.
I think that's better. I think if I remember correctly, that's gonna actually pass during the dark times. Does that get those neighbors? The only time that I know of. My only been there since the sixty. Is one of the reasons for him and L and I grew up at the facility, that L and I gave him their pen. And uh, everybody was screaming about yelling at all. But people, anything else, I don't know, neighbors screamed about that change.
Well, I remember this this recent, when they finally got the variance, it was contingent upon falling all the other, not asking, right? I I remember correctly, and then that that came up with the play structures, cause they were way, way up high, and this poor lady who lived there. And her husband and her built their home was, were looking at that, and it was like imposing on their, on her, you know, front porch or whatever. I remember the testimony in the zoning hearing board, independent recollection of that, because I actually asked her questions. Um, during her testimony, so she showed pictures and. That particular neighbor, yes, but I didn't see another neighbors for the play structure bomb, and it was just.
Yeah, it was just her, and I think she passed away, and so there's new ones there. And the fence is sort of falling down that they put up. Yeah, it's bad, bro. I mean, and that's, if you do one, I mean, the planning commission does have thermal ridge on their agenda, but aren't doing any ordinances and. Ask them with. Do you have one member on the the planning commission?
I told them to go through zoning hearing, but was that the incorrect procedure? Should I tell them?
Think you can, I mean, they they could go for a use variance, but that's a hard standard.
Yeah.
That's show that it's worthless now. They couldn't do anything, couldn't convert it to a red single family residence. Good.
Yeah.
So that is an option. There's also legislative changes. I don't, I mean, I don't know what else is out there. There's a lot over there. You could do an overlay. Something, but.
I think this is worth us looking into at least, because I think that. I think that would provide a community benefit there. I mean, as long as it's, and Stephen is the thing, he talked about, you know, they're gonna limit hours, they're. Not gonna have a patio and music, it's, you know, be done by eight P M. I don't think they're planning on being open on weekends. So I think they're trying to make it as attractive as possible to neighbors and the least disruption possible. Well, coffee and like a little deli, he was saying like, you know. A dinner special on Monday night, let me low or something, and Tuesday night you can go in and get a pork loin or something. It's it's cooked and ready to go, so. That's certainly, but.
Yeah, that's.
It does.
Will they live upstairs? They're upstairs.
No, they live over on Bonnet and um they go to, um, in friends or.
It's kinda similar to a gas station right here. It can't be reproached for any, I mean.
Right.
It's kind of an old building, been there for a long time, but it doesn't make the zoning.
And the zoning is restrictive, yeah. Well, and I I told them that too. I said. Not exactly the same, but similar went through.
Similar, yeah.
And they were unsuccessful, so.
Well, as I say, if you look at the the uses and if there's some sort of like community based convenience store and you define it a certain way, you have those requirements, maybe that. Rest of that one.
Well, actually, um. The gas station would like some kind of reconsideration or something. Well, I guess I won't be taking my client for service. I was gonna try the last time I was there last week, um, so. They would like courtesy as well if you're looking to change.
Yeah.
One little thing, just to look today to see your prayer. Uh, two of those small houses right up next to Rochester Road. Property under came in today, there's options for areas of the houses on, a few houses in there as well. On certain juice box, or your property can begin some requests. We're looking at trying to build a modern house and those. And there are only about a hundred feet to any of those sets that I have, but I'm not impressed that they wanted.
Um, didn't think this review, that little yellow one?
It's another one of the.
Yeah. That's all I.
So maybe this.
Look at it. I mean, it's on my list to tie, I gotta tell him in about minutes, I kind of like it there, but we got one planning commission member. Probably Tim as well.
Okay, should I tell Stephen, don't bother going to zoning hearing board, give it to planning instead?
Okay, I tell him to get a lawyer, and then he can take it through, I mean. He can do both, he can do one or the other.
Yeah.
I mean, it's. This type of legislative, if people remember like uh farmers markets. They're PC to get through, uh. Even garage doors and then.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Good.
Hey, sounds good, so uh. But um, we can go to.